I mean, that's.
They get this done in under two hours.
Let's go. Daddy, how about reading through the pledge?
Would you just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody take minutes, like minutes, meeting, minutes from January? I read them online. I didn't see anything. Anybody else see anything on them?
I have a proposed change.
Go right ahead.
It says Mrs. Burkhardt would like to move forward with adopting the food and beverage tax. I'm pretty sure I moved forward with a vote on whether to adopt the food and beverage tax.
Okay. Move forward with a vote. Anybody else having changes? Get that, Jim.
So they vote to adopt.
A vote on adopt.
On adopt.
Anything else? Can we take a motion to approve?
I might get most of it.
You'll make some motion to approve with changes. Ashley seconds. Any other discussion? I don't know if it's in favor.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion passes. Okay, Michelle Gaidens, get your eye.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Michelle Gaidens. I'm the director of Petter Ride. And I'm just here today to provide to everybody with an update on our service. For those of you in the audience who may not be aware, Petter Ride is public transportation, and we are open to anyone fresh purpose in our six county service area. And we operate Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM. In 2023, we provided 7,144 one-way trips for 126 individual Decatur County residents. We continue to partner with Decatur Industries, and most of our trips were for Decatur Industries employment, medical, and shopping. We have two routes that originate here in Decatur County from the YMCA, and those two routes do most of the in-town trips. We had at least seven other routes that transported Decatur County residents last year. Our numbers remain about 60% of where they were pre-COVID, and we've spent a lot of our time just trying to retain or hire new drivers. This year, we're hoping to and planning to get out and do some outreach with local service agencies, housing complexes, et cetera, in order to promote our service and try to get an increase in our trip numbers. We regularly attend the Decatur County United Fund monthly meeting and have also been attending the Grounds for Change nonprofit meetings in order to help promote and inform others about our service. Last year and this year, we're working on installing internal and backup cameras in all our vehicles. We received a grant a couple of years ago to fund the cameras, and we're making our way through that installation process. Our main goals for the cameras are to reduce accidents, particularly backing accidents in our small transit vehicles. There's a blind spot. We don't have backup cameras in those. So we're hoping that will reduce our accidents. Also with the cameras, we hope to address any customer complaints or issues, provide driver training and incentives and recognition for exemplary driving behavior. Last year, we received seven replacement minivans that we plan to use throughout our six counties. Due to the global parts shortage, these were the first new vehicles we received in three years. This year, we're going to receive six new minivans. We're actually downsizing some of our fleet just due to the increased cost of the small transit vehicles. They used to be in the $50,000 range. Now they're over $115,000 each. And we have to provide 20% match for each vehicle so that that's really cost prohibitive for us, and a lot of what we do is rural. So we're able to downsize to those minivans on some of our vehicles. Especially what we do here in Decatur County. We typically run the small transits because we typically have groups of individuals we're transporting to and from Decatur Industries. So we'll continue to run the small transits here. But in the future, if that price doesn't come down, we may have to revisit whether we move to minivans, but that won't impact our service. Last year, we had two quadriannual reviews. One was through NDOT, and the other was through the Drug and Alcohol Program. And we, there were no findings on either of those reviews. We also completed our annual pass-through oversight review through historic Hoosier Hills, and there were no concerns or issues down there either. We are currently looking for drivers in all counties, including Decatur. All drivers are part-time and start at $14 an hour. So if you know of anyone who's looking for a part-time job that would be interested in helping, please send them my way. Anybody have any questions?
I do. The community foundation last week around our county and did some researches to things that could use improvement or things we'd like to see in the future. And public transit was brought up quite a bit. And I think you're one, if not the only form of public transit. Do you see more demand than you're able to accommodate? What are your thoughts on that?
Typically, when we look at our numbers, we have relatively low denials, but that just may be because people aren't reaching out to us or maybe aren't aware. So we probably need to promote more. But it's catch 22. When we're short drivers and don't have as many routes available, we promote the service, somebody will call us one time, and if we can't get them, they give up. So we've been really trying to focus on hiring drivers, and that way we can have that availability open. That way, when we do promote, that will actually be able to get people that are interested. But we've been going to those grounds for change meetings where, that are posted by the main foundation. So, you know, they're trying to promote our service there and hope to get out and about more this year and try to encourage licensure.
Any other questions?
We really appreciate your support and thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Danny.
Good morning. This is juvenile probation related. A couple of months ago, we came in and asked if we could reallocate some funds from our salary fund, juvenile probation salary fund, to do some programming. I want Jeremiah here to update you on that. That's gone very well. And this is not asking for anything new. It's just to reallocate funds we already have been awarded. I have in my budget for juvenile probation salary $70,000. We historically pay the primary juvenile probation officer $35,079 out of that, the balance of that salary comes from probation fees. So that left the balance and gave us permission a couple of years ago to hire a second juvenile probation officer. That's where these excess funds were earmarked for. We weren't able to fill that position. I think one of the reasons is it requires a four-year degree to be qualified as a probation officer, and the starting pay was $38,000. So those two things just didn't go together. We didn't get the applicants we wanted. We ended up hiring Jeremiah here, and we're still using the same numbers for his salary. With this excess, we gave him some time to kind of get a feel for the job, see if he actually needed a full-blown second juvenile probation officer. He'd take one if he could get one, but I think we're happy with what we've started. What we wanted to put on with these excess funds is the Y-try program. We asked permission from you folks to train someone to put it on and to pay someone to actually put it on for our youth hearing community. We are very happy with the results of that. So what we'd like to do is expand on that. The person that was hired, what we're contracting with, is pretty excited about additional programming, maybe offer a second Y-try class in addition to the one that we have each week. But those funds we would need to allocate, and I talked to the auditor's office, they would like to see those funds put in a programming fund, a training fund. We'll give a thousand dollars of it in a fund that they have that would be called training. The balance would be put in a fund for programming or programming director, and that's all contractual. There's no hiring of anyone, no insurance, no benefits. So it's, we get a lot more out of this doing it this way than just hiring another person. But I want to let Jeremiah explain to you what he'd like to do going forward. I think it's just reallocation more so than anything. I don't honestly think we would use the entirety of these funds. We'll have a better idea for dealing with you how much of them. But going forward, with your permission, these would be a budget item different than salaries, but no more money, just reallocating. So Jeremiah, go ahead and tell me how it's going.
Hi, good morning. Thanks. I just made some notes. You know, like Judge said, we came here within the last year to talk about programming. You know, I kind of assessed where we were at in juvenile probation, and I think that this need is greater than having an additional officer. So I found an instructor, someone who I thought would do a great job, and we started talking about what our needs were with juveniles in the county, which is how we kind of got to Y-try. Our first Y-try class started January 31st. Currently, I think three weeks now, we have 13 students that have been referred to that program. Currently, there are 12 in the program. The one person had moved out of county, so she left the program. With Y-try, we serve the whole community, not just probation. We have six kids from South Decatur, two from North Decatur, two from Greensboro High School, two from Greensboro Junior High School, and we have one homeschool referral. These referrals can come from, obviously, probation. You know, if I have a kid through court, we can do that. We've done referrals through truancy situations where kids aren't going to school, and I will meet with the school, and if they're appropriate, we'll send them through there. With probation, I think it's ordered most of the time. You have to do that. But everything else is the choice of the family. We started a situation where we've been talking about alternative to expulsions. I think that some of our goal in the county is how do we keep kids in school? How do we get them across, you know, the line to graduate? A lot of these, I guess the schools, most of them have zero tolerance for certain things, and that means that they're out. You know, if first time something happens, they don't get an opportunity to get credits that semester. They can come back August and try again. I know firsthand how that affects a child, especially if they're in a home. You know, they don't have any opportunities. You know, you take away a whole semester. Sometimes it's hard to come back from that. So we had our first South Decatur alternative to expulsion where instead of an expulsion, they put them through the Y-try program. If they participate, the school is going to allow them to come back into their building. Through that program, we just update the school weekly. I partnered with the schools, so they're also following through. So it gives more opportunity for intervention at the school, at home, and with us at probation. We currently have three students from South Decatur, because that's what came up, through that alternative to expulsion program. Since we've started the program, we've had perfect attendance. It's important, I think, to understand that these kids are not volunteering to do this program because they want to do the program. A lot of times, they're kind of pushed into this or something else is going to happen. But every week, those kids can choose not to come, and every week they have chosen to come. So I think it's very beneficial, and I think they enjoy being there. Since I started working with the schools, I know one school in particular has reported a 10% increase in attendance. I know truancy has been an issue in our county, in every county probably. And I really do, I think we're seeing a change. And what's cool about what I'm doing, everyone's on board. All the schools are on board. For the most part, administration is on board. They like the ideas. They like the options. So I think we have something going here. With our Y-try class, we're pretty full with 12 kids. We also have kids age 13 to 17. So that's a difference in risk. That's a difference in, you know, maturity, things like that. So I've been talking to my instructor, and we think it would be beneficial to open a second class. We are continuously getting referrals into the program. We do not want to turn people away if we don't have to. But I think if we have another class or two classes, then we can separate by age or by risk or, you know, means, things like that. Like Judge said, you know, our plan in talking through this is to be able to provide, but not to exceed any budget that's available to us. So if we have the opportunity for two, or we're running out of funds, you know, then we would shorten back to one if that's what we needed to do. With the budget and I guess a pot of money, knowing what we're working with, it would give us the opportunity to explore other options such as parenting classes. You know, through talking to the school, they say we're having an issue with vaping. We could explore an option to teach a class for vaping, whether it's a one-time class, you know, or quarterly or things like that. I just think that, you know, we hear these things from everybody, especially the schools for what I do. You know, we're having these kids that are going with this. We don't know what to do. And a lot of times, there isn't a resource for them. But this kind of gives us that opportunity to say, well, I think I can help. I think we can bring them in there, which ultimately saves us money through, you know, no arrests, no probation later, no jail later, ultimately, you know, no drug situation overdoses. I mean, I think we hit this now when they're young. I think we're going to see a change later. So I guess my point of all this is I think this is successful. I support this class. I wouldn't put a program in that I didn't believe in, and I believe in this, and it's gone really well. Thank you.
What's the underlying message of Y-try?
So Y-try is cool because it's called Y-try, which means why try. It gives these kids the opportunity to find goals, to find purpose. It teaches them, you know, why go to school and why is it important to get credits? You know, why is it important to be involved in things? It also teaches them, you know, how to communicate with adults versus how to communicate with peers, how to be appropriate in situations. You know, if you're angry at school, you know, how to resolve that issue without getting suspended. So it's kind of that life skills that we would all benefit from. And with Y-try, it's 15 to 18 weeks, but you can adjust that how you want, you know. So you have a topic. You have a main idea. You take your class and you see what they need and you teach it in that way.
Currently, Y-try, does it work as good for third graders as it does for?
Well, I can tell you it doesn't work for me for third graders because age gap, you know, I don't know that that would be something that I would get involved in. I think it could work. I think that you could use Y-try and relate it to that age group. Man, if we, if we want to make this bigger, maybe eventually we get into something like that. And that's why I've had conversations with Greensboro Elementary, and, you know, they have some kids and behavior issues. And I have to be careful because my job is through criminal and delinquency. But I think that if we open the door to, okay, well, what are your issues? I think we can find a program for that, you know. If we have a bunch of kids who just can't sit still in class, and there's a program for, you know, young adolescents, then maybe we can put together a program and teach it, you know, at court services. I don't think it has to be probation related in that sense, as long as we have. We really go to do that.
Well, you just have senior seniors.
Well, seven, grade six to 12. And that's, I think, there's some parenting classes. I know no one wants to do a parenting class, and no one wants to sit for 10 weeks. But I think that, you know, if you have the parent that reaches out to the school and says, I need help, I don't want them to leave with, sorry, we can't help you. You know, I don't want to be that, I don't want to be that community, you know. And I think that they reach out to the school and said, I need help, and the school partners with me, I think maybe we can find something. Or at least feel better when you leave that meeting.
Any other questions, sir?
Thank you. It's just a reallocation of funds to push for programming. We are, I tell you, at your head, so this money that we're talking about last year, we didn't use at all. So we just don't want to, we don't want to lose it. We go for the good use. I think the savings, not hiring someone that would have insurance benefits is a lot cheaper. We're getting somewhere. The kids that I took to deal with that get in trouble are the ones that are suspended from school, that are expelled from school, running around, getting in trouble. So I like where he's headed with things. I don't want that. I think we're going to see in the long run, good results.
Do you need to do anything, Jim? Transfers? Next month?
We don't have anything. Okay.
You want to put it together?
I'll rely on them to put it in.
I have no problem with it. As long as it's doing what it should do, I put it all on you 100%.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa.
Good morning. Basically, just came back today to follow up on some of the things that you had asked us to do last meeting. One was you would ask possibly getting input from the county or the communities around to see what they might want in a pool to give you a better idea what, how they felt, what, that kind of thing. So we put together a survey on Survey Monkey, and we were fortunate, I thought, we got 1,048 responses, which I thought was a good number back. Out of those responses, and you all got this on Friday, I do have copies here. If you want to look at something while I'm talking, I can hand you a copy of it. If you don't have one here, just send that there for everybody. But one of the first questions, of course, that was asked is where do you live? The majority of the responses came from Decatur County, but the highest Greensboro and Sidesville limits. But we also had responses from West Portland Hall and outside of Decatur County. Most of the respondents were female, but we did have 269 responses from males. The most are the largest group age-wise that responded for us was in the 31 to 49 range with 525 responses. Most of them all had children under the age of 18 in their household, ranging from zero all the way up to 18. So it did cover a large range of users and what they would like to see in the pool. There was also a question about how often did you use the family or how often did your family use the pool during the season when it was open? Most often, the highest it looks like was they were used to when I was younger, and some said never. But there was all the way down from rarely, once a month. Those were all in the, you know, just under 200 for rarely, once a month for 151. So there were wide range of users. Would you support or oppose a new pool facility for Decatur County? We felt like this was important question. And out of the respondents, 545 strongly support a new pool facility in Decatur County, and 247 respondents somewhat support. So we thought that that was a huge number, actually. And over half would say they would support the new pool in some way, shape, or form.
Over 75%.
Okay, there we go. So yes, because there was also a somewhat likely that I did not, I just stood the top two. So yes, absolutely. Um, we thought that was a positive comment so that we do know the community does support a pool of some sort. Then we also put out there for them to let us know, we kind of wanted to know what they wanted to see in an aquatic center or a pool. So we, uh, listed several of the things that we have been talking about over the past several months. And the top answer was water slides, followed closely by the zero entry. And then the lazy river. The zero entry, we feel like is an absolute must. It's, it's going to increase the pool usage for everyone. There's no age barrier. There's no barriers to users who have special needs and we want to keep our facility inclusive to everyone. So that is an absolute, if we do a pool, we, or aquatic center, it absolutely needs to have zero objection. Uh, the lazy river, we have pushed that as a health incentive, not only just for the pool. But as I've said many times over, some like North Vernon has rest care that comes in the morning. They do water walking, they bring out rehab patients, the hospital. They, these are things that we could possibly partner with our health facilities and utilize that in off-hours so that we could get the pool used more than just the typical 12 to six daily feature. And, um, as, as expected, the, the common answer for what would be important to the new, what type of programming would be important for the new facility? They just, they're, most of them, the majority were looking for recreational swimming, taking their family to a pool. But there would also be, um, opportunities for water classes, aerobics, uh, swimmer time, uh, swim time for children or adults with disabilities that need a different atmosphere to enjoy the pool. They're not all want to be out there during the, you know, hustle vessel of the day. So there's opportunities there. Um, we had some open-ended questions, um, one that we were most concerned with or interested in is if you or your family traveled to a neighboring pool during the past swim season, meaning, you know, even when we were open, what town or city did you visit? 488 people responded to that opening question and not surprising, 251 of those people said Shelbyville. That is what we have heard at our pool, not just since we started this project, but for years now is you, you really need to do what Shelbyville did. You really need a new pool, Shelbyville's the place to go. So, uh, followed right behind that was Batesville, but there were also 29 different locations that people lived to. Um, lap swimming was another thing that's still being requested, shade, multiple shade areas. Uh, and, and other questions there. So we did that and it felt like we, um, came up with some of the questions that we hope will help you guide your decisions going forward. And I also got Carly here from R.L. Turner today. If you have any questions, she graciously volunteered to come today in case you had anything for her. And on another topic, I was, a couple of council members reached out to me to make a trip to Aurora. We had not traveled as a pool committee to that area down there. They also have a new pool. Um, so I, I reached out and met with their park director and she was gracious to give me a tour of the pool. So I walked through the pool building, um, discussed some things that they've seen in the one year that they've been open. Walked around the pool, the pool is smaller and surface size than what we have currently, but it does offer a lot of the amenities that we've been discussing for our pool, such as it does have a diving well, which has been kind of something I've advocated for just in my years watching the pool, knowing that it's not just for kids, adults love diving board, teenagers, everybody loves the diving area. A rock wall, lap lanes, it has one smaller slide, it's smaller than the one we currently have. It has a water play area and a zero entry. Um, I talked to her on different things and she would kind of recommend that her zero entry be a little larger. If it was a little tight fit where the water structure is, there wasn't a lot of space to maneuver around it, especially if it was crowded top, or crowded times. So that might be a place where we can expand if, you know, went off the sun design like that. I asked her about the pool meeting their expectations in regard to revenue and attendance. And she said, at the end of the first three weeks of the first pool season, they were open. They matched the previous year attendance and far surpassed their revenue at that time. She, I also asked her about a concern that I keep getting asked about and asked about, about staffing. And she said, they have had no staffing issues. They, they did have to raise their pay from $10 an hour to 14, which is what we were at when we were in our last school season. We were paid 14. And they also offer paid lifeguard instructions, which we as a pool committee have talked about that. And in order to, um, that, that was costing my guards $200 to get that and they had to do that every two years. And that's a lot of money. I mean, that's several of their first hours of work were paid for their certification. So I think that we need to definitely look at that and we, and the way they do it and the way that I've been thinking is they reimburse it at the end of the season. If they, you know, choose to guard and leave and go somewhere else, obviously you don't want to pay their certification. But she said they had numerous lifeguards, it's not an issue. So, you know, can't say that that's going to be a definite given everywhere you go, but, I mean, it was nice to know that somebody had addressed that. They also had great community, community support and several fundraisers for, um, that, their pool project, which when it was done was a $3.5 million project. Um, 1 million of that coming from community support, she said, based on fundraisers, they did three of the basketballs. They just did a multitude of things, but the rest of it was done through financing. And they do their parks department a little different down there. Uh, it's a city parks department. And when it came to financing, she said that really was outside of her. She wasn't involved in it, so she couldn't really tell me what that financing was or how we did it.
I'm sure they get rid of both money.
Well, I did ask that, I said, I'm assuming it's riverboat money. And she said, not what you would think because Lawrenceburg's on one side with theirs and Rising Sun. But because they are in the middle, they are a very low income area and they get, uh, she mentioned $70,000. Riverboat money, but it was divided among different departments. So I don't think that was the button for their project.
Did they have an existing pool that they're not?
Yes, I asked her if it was a new pool, a brand new pool or, and she said, no, they had a pool, a rectangle pool. And I said, what about a baby pool? She said, a small body of water off to the side. So if you've ever visited a more, more pool, if you don't really have a rectangle pool, we do have a diving well, but we do have that little bottom water. So, um, their bid of 3.5 billion did not include the demolition of the pool. Their city workers did most of that, somehow they did. It was not included in their bid. So, um.
Was that building with a new pool house too?
That was a new pool, pool house, yes.
How's our pool house?
We're hoping in all of our plans to utilize the building that we have with whatever upgrades need to be made. And it's 20 years old already, so, um, it's going to need some updates.
The estimates you had on the back there for Aurora, and I'm just using that as an example, like four point.
The, the rate moved up to today.
Was that with a pool house included?
I believe that's how it was bid. Um, it, it was done just as bid, it was updated to 4.8 to 5.2 million per nap, based on rates today.
With the pool, with the pool, that was with the pool house?
Yeah, she told me the pool was, the pool house was included.
I have another question, I'm not picking on you, but, uh, in your questions down here, question five, all of them have a parentheses out here, is that, how many people responded?
Question five?
Back and about here.
A write-in question or a?
Now, with what else can be done to improve all of them?
Oh.
Three and three responses.
I bel, I believe that was all done through Survey Monkey, so I did not do that. But I would say it's based on.
I just wanted to get a parentheses.
Based on the one question, number five, it was asking about, uh, where you've gone, the number of parentheses was the number of responses.
No, I'm talking about your questions down here.
I think it's still the, I think it's 28 people or whatever number that is, is how many responded to that, I would say.
Nobody, I mean, it doesn't say how many responded.
Right, it doesn't tell you how many responded. I mean, but it's, that's how many responded to each one of those questions.
Oh, so question five, it didn't say how many responded.
It's actually question.
Budget cost of, effective. Question 11 in budget, in five, budget cost efficiency.
Yes, there are no numbers, you're right. There is, it was only.
But question just one, I don't know if that would be.
That was all generated by the Survey Monkey, so I don't have that, I don't have an explanation for that other than like, yes, but maybe it was an, under a certain amount, maybe they don't calculate it or. But I would say all those other numbers and parentheses were the number of people that responded to those questions or was those same ideas.
That's true, I just wondered why five didn't have.
Yeah. I see that now where you are. So any other questions for me at this time? Um, the other thing that was brought up at the meeting last month was you had asked the, the council had asked for R.L. Turner to toss, to create a design for our pool, not an overlay concept that they shared with us at the, at the last meeting, that an actual pool design and, and it was explained going forward from there on that there would be costs to do that. And, um, they have quoted us $15,000 for that. And, um, I talked to Danny and reached out to the council because I wasn't sure who in that conversation at the meeting was going to pay for that cost. And I didn't feel I had the authorization to go ahead and say, yes, please design that pool and someone's going to pay $15,000. So, um, it was the council's thoughts were that the money would come from the park fund, park budget, uh, through pool monies that have not been spent or will not be spent 24, since we don't have a pool. And, um, I brought that before the park board last night and it was approved that they were willing to do that. If, if indeed that's the way we choose to go. There was some discussion yesterday morning concerning that at the commissioners' meeting about whether we proceed that way or if that was the best way to proceed. So I don't know if there's more discussion to come on that at this point, but our board has given approval. Then we will, if we will, if that's part of it.
Hey Danny, I got a comment.
Right ahead, ready?
You know, I've been around the construction business for 40 years and I still don't understand why we cannot take this project and spec it out as to how many square feet of water surface you want, how many square feet of patio surface you want, what kind of entry you want, what kind of diving lanes you want, and put it out for a design and build bids. That way we get several contractors involved and I think we'll get the taxpayers the best bang for their buck.
Everybody hear that? I think that boils down to commissioners, doesn't it?
It's a commissioner's call, yes.
Well, I think we've been going about this all wrong. The commissioners should be coming to us, they need to do the, the, the design and they need to come to us for the money. And we've been, we've been trying to do everything and I just, I don't know, I just don't think it's been handled right. Cause it's actually county property. And I'd like to turn it over to the commissioner myself, but then.
Uh, I think as a pool committee, I think we tried to start out and give you some ideas of what we were hoping or what was out there, what, not necessarily what we were hoping, but it all, you know, began with the ready process and trying to get a proposal of a conceptual design and getting things ready to get that money. So that's where it all started. I don't know whose responsibility it is, but I think before we move forward and spend any additional funds, we need to make sure that we know where we're going.
Well, this all got started because of food and beverage tax.
Well, it actually all started, uh, two years ago.
Well, that's the reason that kind of, is for the food and beverage tax, because we have to okay the food and beverage tax. The pool money.
I know after yesterday's meeting, commissioners want a budget to operate within. We don't want to waste any money on pool design or any time investment, there's no money. So the council needs to provide us a budget of what we can build. We can design a 5 million.
Yeah, we did that.
We voted at the last meeting to do five to six.
Five to six million dollars, girl.
But is that money there? Cause we've had three executive sessions where we've been told there's no additional money. There's been no conversation on how to pay for the annex. There's been no conversation to pay for the shortfall in the bridge funds that are predicted in the next three to five years. So the commissioners are concerned with the happenstance of four or six million dollars.
Well, then the commissioners need to make the decision of what you're going to do because that's where it needed to start because of the commissioners. There, they own the property, they're in charge of the construction, they're in charge of all that, not the county council. Need to have all that done through the commissioners, decide what you want to do, how you want to do it, how much is going to cost? And then you come to us and we decide how we're going to pay. It's been the other way for.
Since we started.
I don't know how long.
So the council doesn't want to provide a budget for us work with it?
We're, we're. We're not ready.
We're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, no, last meeting.
Ask to be hold as close to five as I can. Well, move forward.
And I don't have a document with me, but from past meetings, incorrect, I'm wrong, please. But this bid here included a bill. We do not need a bill.
Right.
So in the past meetings, it's quoted between 700 and a million, 700,000 and a million dollars for a building. Correct or incorrect? So if we subtract that off this amount that we have now, four, I'm not talking the Aurora design. Then we're down to close to 4 million dollars.
But the question is, will the Aurora design accomplish what our community needs are?
I did not, my question, the figures is what I was getting around here, because we do not need buildings to subtract a million dollars off of whatever.
I don't know what their building was out of their project, I didn't get into that in detail. If that, if I need to do that, I'm going to have to go back to the city or the town or whatever it is to find out more specific fundraising.
I know Commissioner Payton was concerned about spending $15,000 to pay for a design and a bid. And had concerns as to whether there was the money to support five million. And requested an executive session so that we could go over that and ensure that that was good. I think his quote in yesterday's meeting, he didn't want to waste $15,000, but didn't have the money when he wasn't willing to sacrifice the annex. Nor am I for the pool. And the three executive sessions we had over County Highway Garage, I know that I'm not necessarily comfortable. We're going to come up with another two to three million dollars. But I don't want to waste.
Okay, then we got, we have 4 million dollars on the table. Take that and build a pool. If you want some numbers that we know we can pay for.
Where do we have 4 million dollars?
We got 3 million dollars of money already. And we got a million dollars that we can get, that we have access to, that we can pay for that. So if you want a hard number, 4 million dollars is it. We already told you we could do, we would shoot for five to six and we would, to go with that number. And if we weren't comfortable that we could do that, we wouldn't have told you that. At least that's what I'm understanding from everybody else, not just me. But we got 4 million dollars, if you want a hard number that you're, you know, you can pay for, then you got 4 million dollars. Am I correct on that? Sure.
Yeah, and I don't think you're going to know what cost until you put it out for a design and build bid.
We've already engaged the VOT process and hired R.L. Turner. The commissioners signed off on R.L. Turner running the project. That's why they're sitting in our meeting today.
You feel comfortable with 4 million, Ernie?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think we can find the money somewhere, I guess. But I'd, I'd sure like to see it bid, get, get, make sure we're getting a good price. Uh, you know, we're not building a bridge over a river, we're not building a high-rise, we're building a swimming pool. I don't think it's rocket science, we, I don't think we need to spend half a million dollars for design.
Okay. Val, have any comments?
Yeah, we've already determined that 4 million dollars will not build a pool that will suit our community. And you've seen numerous examples of that in the past few months when we keep going back to a number that's non-existent.
You know, have you put it out for bids?
We're doing.
We're not putting it out to bid, we're in a VOT process. The commissioners already acquired R.L. Turner to build the project.
They put it out for bids. In a VOT, in a VOT instance, R. In a V O T, in a V O T instance, R L Turner will bid it out wherever the budget is.
Carly's here, she can explain it.
That, that's correct. Once the, once the project is designed and we have a, a design to be able to put out for bid.
Carly, can you, can you come use the speaker?
You are correct. Um, once the project is designed fully, and that's what this fifteen thousand is really used to do, is to get that conceptual design based on what community needs are and what was discovered in that survey. Once that design is created, then the, the project will go out to bid and it'll go, you know, multiple different contractors will look at it, it'll be a competitive bid to allow for the best price for the community to build this pool.
But if, if the commissioners give you a budget of four million dollars or five million dollars, whatever that number is, that's what you're going to design to, correct?
What, what the budget is, is what we will design to. If, if it, if it helps to put into perspective kind of what the, what pool you would be getting for around a four million dollars is, if, if any of you were at the last meeting, the Wayntown pool that we just, that we discussed, that is less than half of your water size, less than half of your deck size, does not hold as many patrons, and it's just a body of water, is going to be close to two point one to two point seven million at the final construction phase. Any other pool that you were looking at, even Aurora Core that Teresa was just mentioning, building that today would be four point eight to two point, or five point two million average. And so, and again, that pool is almost two-thirds your water size and just barely a little bit bigger of a deck size, and so you're not getting much more of a pool for four point eight to five point.
But here again, that had a bath house on that, you could put that into the pool.
That is correct, and, and this pool was, or this bath house, as we discussed, would need some renovations, it would need some updates to accommodate. You know, the more patrons, the more, the more facilities that we have on this.
But the cost will be a little bit less because you're not building a new facility.
Potentially, yes.
No, I mean, that's not, that's not, but not potentially, that's how it could be, I mean, you don't have to remodel that thing for what it costs to build new, then.
I would have to see what the Aurora Pool House was, how, how hard it was, what it accommodated to be. But then we, we built pool decks especially for the Wayntown that, that were five hundred thousand dollar buildings, I mean, they were not anything fancy. You may say, you, you would say, um, depending on what those factors are.
But here again, all this stuff we're talking about needs to go to the commissioners. Needs to go to the commissioners before we, when we, we've already said that we would, in the ten minutes from the last meeting, that we targeted five to six million dollars, and we'd like to see it getting to less than that, but, you know, and it's their decision if they want to spend the fifteen thousand dollars to get it designed because it's their deal, not us. I think to get this thing moving forward, they've got to make some decisions and, and some approvals and get the design going, because you can't really do anything without a design, I think that's where you need to go next. Val's having anything? Because I look at it as the way we've got to jail. We were letting agents, that's it. They came up with design, they came up with everything, we sat in on our meetings when they built the jail, they'll give me a run. We sat in on all their meetings, we worked a lot of that. And result, all we did was fund it. They took over and ran it. Does that make sense?
No, I understand that, and frankly, if this job was to go out to a design to build project, other than the V O T process, you're going to be spending a lot more money on design upfront without the potential of that job coming in under budget to be able to be constructed. And so through this V O T process, you're allowing these contractors and these designers to get involved early, to know what your budget is, design it for less because there's a potential of that construction happening with those contractors. And so that's the incentive for both sides, is that you're not committing to, you know, spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on a design that may come in twice your budget, you're committing to spending some to work with a team to design within whatever that budget may be.
Val's having questions, concerns? Okay, thank you. Let's move on here. Teresa, do you have anything else for us?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. You've cut you off, you do.
Nope, that's okay.
Okay. Let's move on to, again, Val's having any further additional incumbents and salary ordinance? Okay, let's go to the additionals here. Uh, I've got a copy of it. The courthouse elevator, Kenny told me that should have been changed to a hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
He said a hundred and forty thousand.
Hundred and forty? Yeah, hundred and forty, can we just write that in?
Two hundred thousand is your mark, so that's why it was advertised. When you adopted, whoever makes the decision needs to state how much they want to approve the addition.
Okay. So this was for the courthouse elevator, from the ARCA money?
Right.
And it should be.
It just says it made it for the elevator, not the chair bench or the H B A C.
Okay.
Hundred and forty thousand was the high bid, or that was the fifty thousand, something up to a hundred and forty.
It should just be for the courthouse elevator?
Yeah.
Okay. If I want to make a motion to a hundred and forty thousand?
Make that motion.
Ashley makes a motion to, amount requested, the amount will be a hundred and forty thousand for courthouse elevator only. In second?
Melanie seconds.
Melanie seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I've got another here, sheriff dashboard cameras, ARCA's going to pay for those, twenty seven thousand three hundred and six dollars. If I get a copy of that? I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Bill makes a motion to approve that. In seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another ARCA. Hundred thousand dollars to Brantia House for expansion project from our.
Part of our initiative towards mental health. We've got a little bit, we have that five hundred thousand dollars that aside, this is a part of.
Part of five hundred thousand of mental health?
Yeah, still four hundred left.
Oh, no, no, we've done the wellness court, we've done the E M, uh, E M T.
Nine and four, whatever.
Yeah, and then we did.
Bridge training.
The ridge, and now we're doing this, so we go.
I think there's like ninety thousand dollars left in that five hundred.
Ninety?
They're buying, they're doing the second home. We're going to help them also some of the cost.
I understand a motion to approve. Ashley makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Bill seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's from Soil and Water, this is where they supplement the incomes for Scott Sanders and the girl who works in there. It comes from them, have they sent a check yet?
They did, they did.
They did, okay.
They covered bike.
It's a supplement Scott Sanders, eighty four hundred seventy-eight dollars. And supplements Jenna Nicholson, fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars. And they pay the taxes and bike and everything you're supposed to. It's, makes their pay even. What does, it's for twenty seven thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars, twenty four cents. They do this every year, last year we were like, getting approved, so. Christie getting on, getting it to us early.
So they transfer to county general and then it goes to their page?
Yeah.
From the federal?
It's.
Their budget.
It comes from their board, I'm not sure where.
They're what they got left.
Well, no, they, they've got fundraisers and staff, they get some from the federal government.
Yeah, but it's what's left over in their budget that they're splitting up.
And. It's their, their income.
It's not their budget, their budget's in county general.
Okay.
It's what they, themselves, they get some kind of state, federal money.
Yeah, they get.
Is what they get, they get all this hour to do it, they do it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Take a motion, make a move.
Kenny makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ashley seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have two transfers. Three transfers, I'm sorry. Those are the ones that came in from a grant, those lack of paperwork after doing some research. Sheriff, eighty-three seven.
Let me read about that here. So it must have been a grant, it was, it's, from what I have here, the grant came in and they put it into, uh, their donations, and it should have been made into an actual fund number itself, so we're not completely, so that's what she's doing here.
Okay. So you put it in, it's on the front. Okay. Okay, everybody understand all those?
Make a motion, may allow the.
Bill makes a motion for transfers. Melanie seconds, holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Incumbences. Okay, everyone get a copy of this? This all of them total? This is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents that we missed at the last meeting, correct? The money's all there. I don't think we have to sign on this.
Yeah, we put.
There we go. Just one page?
There is three or four there, we organized them by the day the grants were paid or they had cover since.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's probably three or four pages to.
So this is twenty twenty-three payroll incumbents.
Is that, is that cleaning everything up from here in then?
Yeah, this, this will clean everything up, correct?
What it does is money spent in twenty twenty-three but not paid till twenty-four, so we're moving that, that cash basically into twenty twenty-four so we can use it.
You don't do these one at a, probably do them one at a time here. Payroll incumbents is a hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. Now, what was paid twenty-four, left over for twenty-three, correct?
Or worked in twenty-three, paid in twenty-four.
Yeah, we had that.
Or motion to approve.
Yeah. Kenny makes a motion to approve payroll incumbents. In seconds. Melanie seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor? My post? Okay. Nine-one-one incumbents, is that what I'm seeing here?
Those are probably on January second. They're by date.
Do what?
They're by date. So those were currently staying on January second, but they're covered in that.
Okay. Okay, last one here is for five hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. It's a whole lot different, nine-one-one. Uh, uniform contract services. Commissioners, V M A, prosecutor, entertain a motion to approve this, five oh two, one forty-six, twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
Ashley makes a motion to approve. Melanie seconds, any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen? Okay, one more bit. I was bad. I guess it's going to be approved last time, but probably have to review it. It's a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and five dollars and eighteen cents. We approved it once, we have to redo it anyway. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll submit.
Bill makes a motion. In a second. Any other discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any posts? Salary ordinance, everybody get a copy of that? Have you changed the pool manager?
I did.
I was going to put in for that job, paying three hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour.
I'm going to put in for that one too.
I'm going to say if I went through it, I went through though, I didn't, I didn't see anything but that, that's all I think I seen. I entertain a motion to approve the salary ordinance for the first time this year. Over, Kenny makes a motion. Ashley seconds, any more discussion? Holders in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got one more here. I missed incumbents, health department. Seventy-nine hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. From last year for this year. Entertain a motion to approve that. Andy makes that motion.
I'll second it.
Phil seconds, anybody have any questions, just two things, I don't know what it's for, but it's. Holders in favor?
Aye.
Any posts?
Never make it as a movie star, Danny.
Huh?
You can never make it as a movie star.
No, I don't want to. Waiting on them to get done. Get them all?
Who changed it to one forty? I'm going to throw it out on that elevator, I think, no, not, but who wrote it, Ian?
I did it.
I just think for you to finish it.
How do you want to make me responsible for that? You can initial that. I can bring it. Okay, last thing on the agenda, food and beverage tax. We tabled it at the last meeting. And according to the rules, it's not brought up at this meeting after we've done business. It'd be dead at the next meeting. So we have to make a decision and table it and have an open vote. Or if it's not untabled, the discussion is done. Or if it's not untabled, the discussion is done. That's the rules I read on, on Robert's Rules.
We have legal counsel on that.
That would lead to. I think that's where the, where I read it.
Is that information available when you go to the table? I think it changes those.
If I read it right. Legal counsel, that's a, still have to untable it. If I read it right, once it's tabled, it can be brought up at the next meeting after you, after you have conducted business. After one thing of business has been conducted, it can be untabled with no discussion. Then you bring up what you want to vote on. That can be discussed. But if it's not untabled at this meeting, according to what I read, it's dead at the next meeting. There's no more bringing it back up.
So would we have to untable it?
You'd untable it and postpone it again.
I was going to say if we untable it, then we can postpone it till we can get further research and legal counsel on, just to make sure that that's what agrees.
That's, I mean, that's the way I.
We'd have to do something with it the next.
That's the way I understood it. If you postpone it, you have to put a date on it.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we could just put a date for the next meeting.
I understood table and maybe I'm wrong. Where's Brian? You might, I'm not like that.
I would, I would encourage you guys to talk to this on legal.
Yeah.
Chris, talk to, to do that. I think there's a bill here, so.
Yeah. That's the way I understood it when I read Robert's Rules.
I was on the understanding that with the table, then it would just sit there until we decided what we want to do.
That's not the way I read it, but that's maybe I.
So if we don't table it, if that's the case, then if we don't do anything, close meeting, it's dead.
Right, that's the way I read it.
So.
I'm giving everybody a chance here.
We got it. So really to do it justice, not knowing exactly how that reads, we're going to have to table it, vote on the next meeting.
Untable it. And it is. You have to untable it and then, and then make a motion to postpone. Postponing, you have to put a date on it.
I'll just date it for the next meeting, but if we. Yes, a concern I have is if we, if we don't do anything, say we'll go find somebody to look at it, make sure we're doing it right. And they say, yeah, that was right, then it's done because we didn't do anything with it for a meeting. Am I right in that?
We don't do nothing with it now. The way I read it, it's, it's that. Maybe we'll send something to the authority the way I read it.
With the day, I read the Robert's Rules of Order. If no motion is made to untable.
You have to, you have to pick it up, Ernie.
Okay, I, I agree with you, Danny. From what I read on Robert's Rules of Order, if there's not a motion to untable it, which can have no discussion, the, uh, the tabled motion dies.
I would, if, if that, if that is the case, then I'm going to make a motion that we table it.
Untable it.
And table it.
You have to untable it.
And vote on it at the next meeting. That way we can get your clarity on before we.
Well, you have to make a motion to untable it.
All right, I'll make a motion that way, untable.
I have a motion to untable.
I'll second.
Ashley seconds. There's no discussion on that table. Okay? Jan? Roll caller.
Uh, Deanna?
Untable. So that's a yay. Yes.
Ernie?
Uh, I vote no, leave it tabled.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Melanie?
No.
So I have four yeas, two nays.
Good, we're untabbing. Okay, now, if you want to postpone it to March meeting, you have to make a motion to. You have to have a date along with postponing. I'm just, I, I've sat for two hours reading on this, Robert's Rules.
I won't make a final vote at the next meeting until we've had legal authority look at it and give us guidance. I mean, I'll make a motion on this, but we need to have legal guidance on this. We're just guessing at this point. None of us are lawyers. That's why we hire them.
So what would you motion? Go on, that's the next meeting?
I mean, we don't have to do it on next meeting. We can postpone it a couple of meetings if we want. It doesn't have to be the next meeting. We just have to put a date to it. You know, we have the next meeting to vote on it at the next meeting, that's the question.
Yeah, we sure would.
You know, I'm, I'm getting accused of kicking a can down the road. I'm trying to kick the can out my side foot.
I understand that and I understand. I heard that from two to three different people. I understand what you're saying, but I mean, having that food and beverage tax at some point in time down the road could, we could, it could be advantageous for us. But if we have to make a decision on it, then it is what it is. But I just, I think I'd feel better if we had some legal clarification that that's exactly how it reads. I'm not saying that that's not how it reads. I just would, I think we need to do our due diligence and find that out. But if that is the case, next meeting, we got to make a decision then or yes or no. And if it's not, and we can table it and it's just suspended there indefinitely, and that's what we ought to do.
I'll, I'll give Chris a call since we don't hear no funding. We need to, if we untabled it now, we need to have a postponed date put somewhere.
I will just take it, I'll make a motion that we do it at the next meeting.
Okay, that date would be the March eighteenth, am I right, Jan? On postponement?
Correct.
Kenny makes a motion to postpone it till March eighteenth?
May the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Is it nineteenth?
Nineteenth is.
Nineteenth, okay. Jan second.
I'll second that.
Bill second. Roll caller again.
Uh, Deanna?
Yes.
Ernie?
No.
Kenny?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Melanie?
No.
Forty-two again.
Forty-two. Next meeting. Okay. Anybody else have anything else for the council? Mark? Tony?
I'm sure.
Sheriff?
I'm sure.
Got any updates for us, Brett?
I have a couple, uh, call back from Indonesia. Since I was in Indonesia, um, so. That's actually, but, uh, it was, was a great trip. Uh, just to answer people, why we go to Indonesia, it's the fourth most populous country in the, in the world. Predictably the fourth largest economy by twenty forty-five. And it's the fastest growing in the last thirty-three years behind India. Uh, there are many staple foods, tempeh, which you can actually buy down the street here, but in Indonesia, you grow. Uh, but they have to import ninety percent of the soybean. We were there with the Soybean Alliance. Hopefully, it's a great soy product, uh, bean, I should say. Uh, and Maya was there as well. We had some great beans. I have a full relationship with that company, company, my country, speaking, yeah. Uh, on some other fronts, uh, we had, I think, four companies, Smith or the XL Connections broadband. And Frontier, uh, mainstream fiber, uh, the local R and C, I believe Comcast, Comcast also. Uh, so we'll see how that goes. And I'll say of the six, that the ready fund, the ready two point O applications submitted to the state. Uh, there are some county, uh, projects in that, obviously, uh, will be fair accounts being a big one there. Uh, and I think Kenny said with the beverage tax, there are matching requirements for some of those funds should be ordered. And that's something to keep in mind when you're on, on scheming things, uh, you know, as, as projects, uh, you know, uh, are, are potentially funded by that, by that program, so.
I had a good conversation with Brett at our R and C the other day. He's supposed to be getting us a little bit more information.
Yeah, I think they took on, towards the end, they took on another, uh, I think very strategic partnership to help.
I think he said they partnered up with S E I.
S E I.
S E I on that broadband that I, I.
So we're looking, looking forward to getting good, uh, good results from that. Of course, I think as a, as a, as a D C, it definitely, probably a fast forward reverence of the fourth of these funds. We'll try to work with the reporting lady to try to help, uh, broadband, uh, yeah.
Good. Any more to say anything? Yes, man?
Um, the legislative update that was set for last Saturday has been postponed to March the sixteenth. All of the legislators are on board to come back. So we have Senator Lysing, um, representatives Meltzer, Zimmerman, and Patterson, um, will be in attendance. So, um, if you were planning on coming to that, that has been postponed to Saturday, March sixteenth, again, from eight thirty to ten at Greensburg City Hall. And then don't forget, um, this Thursday, we have two information sessions for the eclipse, um, coming up. So you can choose to come at nine A M. or at five thirty. And all the representatives from our local leaders will be, um, on hand to answer any questions and talk about what plans are, um, that are happening here locally. So that will include Pirate Park and the four H fairground.
Thank you. Hold on, can I, I was planning on coming to that last one. Anybody else?
Make a motion where you're going.
Kenny makes a motion to be hearing.
Thank you.
Jan seconds, all of you say. You want to talk to that one?